Hello, Scott. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, March 22, 2021. Prior to our roll call this evening, a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, I would like you to know that we've been notified by our second ward alderman, Bill Fanoukun, that he will be unable to join us tonight, unless he makes a secret appearance on Zoom. And I'm going to just see if our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, is on Zoom. Lynn, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Thank you. I just could not see you appear on the screen. So with that, I will ask city clerk Fazekas to roll, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanoukun. Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven aye.
Thank you very much. Prior to tonight's pledge of allegiance, and as we stand, I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for a couple of things that are very germane to us tonight. One is, we'd like to send our condolences to our fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams, whose father died on Friday. And we were unaware, Scott, that you were going to be here with us tonight, but we send our condolences to you and your family. Also, we must send condolences to those families of the six women who were killed in Atlanta. What that calls to mind, I think we need to be very cognizant of the fact that we live in a society where we need to get along and we need to denounce some of the racial injustice, some of the racial hatred that we're seeing in our country. So with that, I'd like you to join me in rising, taking a moment of silence, and then we will do the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're at item C on the agenda, and that is to approve tonight's agenda. I would ask if there are any items to be deleted or added. I would ask our council alderman if there are any. I don't see any, so what I would do is entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Now we come to the part in our meeting that we have public participation. Thank you. We will ask the members of the public who would like to speak to fill out a speaker request form. They're in the back of the room. We have several, and I'm going to assume that those who want, who want to speak on the burning of leaves will wait until we get to that item on the agenda. We do have one individual who has indicated he would not be able to be at the meeting tonight. It's actually they. It's Herb and Mitzi Katz, Six Arrow Hood Lane, DeKalb. Asked me to read this and put it into the record at this point. Even though it does apply to the burning of leaves item on our agenda, now is the time for letters to be read on those that have been submitted prior to tonight's meeting. So listen up, city council. Mayor and city manager, city of DeKalb, Illinois. Living in a wooded area with mature oaks within the city limits of DeKalb, Illinois, we would like to express our wish to maintain the current leaf burning ordinance. We use a controlled fire pit for recreational purposes and follow the existing guidelines using some firewood. On a consistent basis, many branches fall from trees located in our yard, and we use this wood frequently for our recreational fire pit. On a very minor basis, some leaves do get burned in this fire pit, but it is more of an afterthought. As a rule, we take huge amounts of leaves to the curb multiple times in the fall, following the ordinance set up for that purpose. We would strongly dispute that this type of burning is an endangerment to local business or recreational activities. Many other everyday occurrences have a vastly more dire effect on the environment, such as jet turbine and diesel engine exhaust and bituminous materials manufacturing. We strongly ask the city council to reject the elimination of current section of the municipal code, Chapter 24, Section 24.02, 307.1.2. Thanks for the open mind when forming an opinion and voting, and hope you maintain the current ordinance. And that's signed sincerely, Herb and Mitzi Katz, Six Arrow Head Lane, DeKalb. Now, seeing no one else who would like to speak at this time, we will move on to presentations. And our first presentation is the Annual Citizens Environmental Commission 2020 Achievements and Activities Report. And with that report, I'd like you to help me welcome our chairperson for Environmental Commission, Claire Crooney. Claire?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, aldermen and women. We actually achieved a lot in 2020, given that we were hampered, as we were. We had two months in a row where we couldn't meet at all, and then we did end up meeting on Zoom. We introduced a B ordinance, B keeping ordinance, to allow backyard hives. That is still under consideration and revision by the attorney for the city. We have investigated and are continuing to investigate light pollution and light trespass legislation, as we have an expansion of LED lights, some of them being overused apparently on certain properties. We are now a Monarch City USA, meaning that since we are in a direct path for migration, we are encouraging people to do the correct plantings of the kind of milkweed that bring the butterfly and will continue to expand their populations as they are in serious danger of, at least threatened at this point, if not in danger of extinction. We did propose a leaf burning ban. That did come from the Citizens Environmental Commission. I will be commenting on that more later. We were able to establish a regular article. If you look either on Thursday or Friday or Saturday, depending on when the Daily Chronicle has room at the beginning of each month, you will see in the inside page to the front cover, an article from our commission focused on the environmental health of this city. We investigated salt applications. I recently wrote an article saying how we have an environmentally sensitive method of spreading salt here. We did realize the installation of the first city-installed dual EV charging station, and we are going to be moving ahead, and we made a recommendation for another. We now have three in the city to be able to welcome people coming in, especially from our more distant cities who need a wayside, a layover place where they can shop and eat while they're getting their cars charged, such as Rockford in Chicago. We co-sponsored three public forums. Once, on the options for solar energy use, very well attended. An organic gardening and sustainability program, which we did with two other organizations. And Wildlife in the City, which was able to explain with the expertise of one of the members of NIU, just how we need to coexist with our wildlife here. Now, we have big goals for 2021, because there's a lot to address, of course. We need to update the DeKalb Sustainability Plan. We need to adopt action plans for each of us commissioners to work on. This was passed and became active in 2014. We have seven years on it, and we're going to need to look this over again. We are going to wait for advice after the election. We are going to support the Upper South Branch Kishawaki River Watershed Plan. I am not certain if this, I don't believe this council has adopted it yet. I know it was awaiting, I believe, to see what the county adoption plan was going to be, but we will support it once that occurs. We are going to recommend light pollution legislation. Continue submitting our monthly articles. We hope to prepare a Monarch Butterfly Festival. If not possible, due to the lingering pandemic this year, we'll plan it for next year. We are going to help implement sustainable guidelines for all city projects that use public funds. So in other words, when you are planning a building, is it possible to consider the solar panels? Can we switch our energy usage from a carbon dioxide emitting plan to something that is going to be carbon neutral? We are going to propose mitigation of potential fireworks damage by researching best practices, considering that this is a highly polluting practice. We are going to promote ComEd's free energy assessment for all residents. We are going to introduce an ordinance to ban single-use plastic shopping bags for purchases from DeKalb establishments. This is not new to the state. This is not new to the area. It is critically needed as our plastic waste continues to build up in the city and in the world. We will promote citywide recycling programs that will require compliance of apartment complex owners. One of the biggest glitches in the whole recycling project, a big loophole. And we haven't achieved that yet. We're going to be working on it. Couple more only. Initiate a conservation program for the home and lawn to publicly acknowledge homeowners who establish effective conservation measures on their own properties. And this is via one of the goals of our Sustainability Plan. Lastly, we have three public presentations that we are going to again sponsor. One coming up in April. That one will be regarding backyard native habitat and being able to welcome the butterflies to our community. We are looking for a sponsor and actually someone expert in 5G technology, because we want to explain to the public what is likely to come and what this is going to entail. And we are going to have another program, in which we had one in the past, on electric vehicles and sustainability as they become more affordable and more widely used. So thank you for your support. You'll be hearing from us. We are a very active commission.
Thank you, Claire. I did not want to interfere with Claire's presentation, but anyone who was speaking tonight, if you feel comfortable, please remove your mask. I don't know if it's if it's me, my age, or whatever, but I think sometimes it's easier to understand folks when they have their mask down. And if anyone has problems hearing me, I've not had that complaint yet. Please do let me know, and I'd be happy to do the same. But I totally appreciate the fact that we are adhering to CDC recommendations and wearing our masks when we're not speaking. I just want to commend our Environmental Commission and all of our boards and commissions, for that matter, for providing so much good input to this council and to the community. So thank you, Claire, for that report on behalf of the Environmental Commission. So item F on our agenda, appointments. A short time ago, Bill Cummings, a member of the Library Board, tendered his resignation because Bill was elected as a board member at the DeKalb County Board, creating a vacancy on the DeKalb Public Library Board. So I'd like to submit for council approval tonight, my appointment of Kelly Meseroli to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2021, and then for a three-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024. May I have a motion to approve this appointment? So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That appointment is approved. Item G, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are normally enacted by one motion, unless any of the items is requested to be removed from the consent agenda. And that consent agenda, as printed, reads minutes of the March 8, 2021 regular city council meeting. Number two, approval and release of executive session minutes. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through March 22, 2021 in the amount of $2,837,137.04. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through January 2021. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through January 2021. And number six, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report for February 2021. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. We have no public hearings tonight, so let's move along to item I on the agenda, considerations. We have three this evening. The first one is consideration of a contract with Gerkey Construction for the repair and remodeling of Fire Station 1 in the amount of $139,205. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The background, I think, delivers the point of this particular item. We have money allocated in the 2021 city budget, more particularly in the TIF 1 budget, to do some remodeling at Fire Station 1 on North 7th Street, and also to replace an exhaust venting system at Station 1 as well. I'm not going to repeat the background. You know that we went to bid, invited some detailed pricing of what it would take for the remodeling, which is a subject of this consideration. Two bids were received, one from Gerkey Construction, one from Weaver Construction, both very responsible firms. The lowest bid was presented by Gerkey in the amount of $139,205. And so we are recommending approval to you for that particular project and at that price of $139,205.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
As this is a consideration, I don't think it's an actionable item at this point.
Oh, okay.
It's an actionable item.
I beg your pardon?
It is an actionable item. Consideration of bids, Mayor, it is an actionable item.
Okay. Our city manager contends that the consideration is in fact an actionable item, and I believe we've had actionable items on considerations prior to this. So roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Yes, Lynn.
I believe that in the past, when there had been actionable items, it was because the council decided that it was an actionable item.
Having said that, I'm going to refer to, defer to our city attorney, John Donahue.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I
Yeah. If both you and Bill would get your mics up closer to your mouths, please.
I agree with the village manager. It is on the agenda. You are free to take an action on really any matter that's on the agenda as your discretion would so dictate. So I think it's on the agenda. It's described in great detail, and it's certainly
Available for, oh, there we go, for the council to vote on.
Okay, I'm just going to look for a show of hands or a show of head shakes. Do you feel that this is appropriate to have a vote on this as a consideration? I see all affirmative. So in this case, city clerk Fazekas, the city council has indicated that they would like a vote on this, so if you call the roll, please.
Thank you. McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch Alderman Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
So it sounds like you have unanimous approval, city manager Nicholas, on that consideration. No, let's go to number two. Consideration of the modernization of the vehicle exhaust removal system at Fire Station 1 by Hastings Air Energy Control Incorporated in the amount of $42,349. Motion, please. So moved. Second. Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As with the first item, money was allocated in the FY '21 city budget, in the TIF 1 budget, in particular Fund 260, excuse me, in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose that's described here in some detail. So the vehicle exhausts removal system, which those who were on the bus trip on Wednesday may be able to see. We plug in an exhaust system to the exhausts of all of our vehicles in order to cut down on the caustic and harmful emissions that may occur inside the apparatus bay. And as the apparatus pull out, whether it's an ambulance, or a truck, or an engine, or something else, it pulls away. And when that happens, as in the case of this particular setup at Station 1, over 6,000 times a year, things wear out. We've repaired this system about as much as we can, and it's essential that we have this working. We really don't want our firefighter paramedics in the apparatus area if we can't have this working. So $50,000 was allocated. The low bid was by Hastings Air Energy Control in the amount of $42,349, and we recommend approval of that lowest responsible bid.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second. I'm going to see if, first of all, any discussion. Given the fact that our city clerk Fazekas has indicated that she'd like to hear a consensus, that we'd like a vote on this matter, do I have a head shake on that, that we again vote on these, or on this particular one? Having said that, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That consideration is approved. Now, let's go to our final consideration for this evening. Consideration of a public works recommendation to more accurately account for larger water meter sizes in the city's water service fee schedule. I'd entertain a motion, first of all, to get this on the floor.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is an item that's brought to you. We'll bring back an ordinance at a later point. But the, this, everybody who has a business or a home in the city has a water meter to record the use of the water usage. And the meter fee, in a fractional way, a small fractional way also, is designed to cover the cost of replacement of that meter and a little bit theoretically for maintenance of the large capital system that we have that delivers the water in the first place. Most of us in local homes have the 5/8 or 3/4 inch meter size. This item does not attend to those sizes or really anything under three inches, which is a larger commercial-sized meter. It happens that we haven't been keeping up with the upgrading costs, so not only are our meters costs from three inches and above not covering the cost of the replacement meter, they're not covering some of these fractional costs as well. So thanks to Brian Favor for bringing that to my attention. It comes to you tonight with a recommendation to address all of the larger commercial and industrial-sized meters. As you can see, the changes from the three-inch and up, there are 118 of these out of 11,000 accounts in our system. Aren't a lot, but we also sent a note around to people who have a business or a location where these meters exist, just to brief them that we're going to have this conversation tonight. And we haven't had any response, one way or another, about this, but we'll have another bite of this apple at a future meeting, so there'll be more conversation about it. But just wanted to show you tonight that we're trying to address something that seems to be just the cost of doing business. We're not looking to cover more than our costs necessarily, but at least the cost of the larger meters, which are considerable, as you can see in your background. So what we're recommending is your support for, to proceed further on this, again, to update the true meter costs for the larger commercial meters and to establish a water fee that doesn't exist right now for the 10-inch metered accounts, which will be coming into our system with the development of the Facebook site.
Okay, that certainly seems to make sense. You know, I just want to commend Brian Favor and City Manager Nicholas for the background information that they consistently provide us on things like this. And, you know, when I first saw this, I said, "I better read through that." And so I did that. But I also would urge anyone in our public who looks at an item like this on the agenda to go to the agenda. It's posted every Thursday, prior to our council meeting, and the background information is right there. So, thank you, Bill and Brian, for providing that information. Is there any further discussion from council? If not, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That consideration is approved. We have four resolutions tonight. The first one, Resolution 2021-023, approving a second addendum to the non-exclusive license agreement for the installation of underground fiber optic facilities within the public right-of-way, that was dated June 15, 2010, for the expansion of the Annie Glidden North broadband infrastructure project. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. In this case, I hope I didn't bury you with background, but I thought this is a great story to tell, and it's an important part of what we're trying to do in this community to deal with what's been an uneven development of fiber to different parts of our community, hence the longer couple pages of background. But it really boils down to this. Our Community Services Coordinator, Joanne Ross, is in the audience tonight, very, in a very dedicated fashion, attends to how we're using CDBG money, the Community Development Block Grant money, federal money, and other monies in this area and in many other areas. And as you know, there was a First Amendment to an agreement that grew out of 2010 council action about a year ago, which was to expand what you're seeing now. If you drive around the Annie Glidden North area, you see some pedestals, and now you see some actual poles going up, and we're going to have more lights in the Annie Glidden North area, and also we're going to have more fiber. Well, we are going to be seeing some more money from the federal government for this purpose, and so we have to come back to you. You have to meet federal guidelines, amend that agreement. That's what this is about. We ask for your support in this. There is no downside to this. It will just further expand the accessibility to fiber in that heavily populated area, so we hope you will support this.
What a great program. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Our second resolution this evening, 2021-024, authorizing the award of a bid to Era Valdivia in the amount of $1,011,056 for the painting and repair of the South Water Tower. We have discussed this item prior. I would entertain a motion to bring this back to the table.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Rubik, and seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last regular meeting, after some discussion, the council followed the recommendation of the city attorney to throw out the bids that we had received, and he directed me to try to negotiate a slightly lower price with Era Valdivia. As I say in the background, I did make contact with the company, talked to the president of the company, who talked to the founder of the company, and the result of that was that the company was willing to reduce their bid by 5%. It was a competitive bidding process. If they were true to the spirit of all that, there wasn't a lot of slack to cut from, so I thought that this was a fair response on their part. The $53,214 reduction in their bid comes to a total then of $1,011,056 for the total Era Valdivia bid. And as you recall, the reason we, that the council took the action it did at the last meeting was further research that we did into some newly applicable state enactments, which would have probably disqualified a number, certainly all the lower bids than this particular company's initial bid. So I thought it was in good spirit that they did this. I'm recommending it to you tonight.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman and McAdams.
Just want to say thank you to the city staff for making the phone call and negotiating the price down, and thank you to the company for finding a way to cut $53,000 and save the taxpayers some money.
Thank you. Alderman Favor, you had some reservations about the process that we had last meeting. Are you comfortable with this recommendation?
I will say that, and I've spoken with the city manager about this as well, I want to make sure that our engineering company that's reviewing the bids with us, that's detailing, you know, the request for bids, that they understand that, and they qualify all the bidders that are submitting bids to the city of DeKalb, so that we don't have to have a question in our mind as to whether a person who's bid on a project is going to fulfill the state law, or is going to, you know, do a quality job. So, with that being said, yes, I will give kudos to the city staff and city manager for going out, getting a reduction. I'm always hesitant to throw out bids, especially if it's, you know, this is the second time that we've thrown out bids, so I do want to caution, you know, the council and team for, if that becomes a standard with the city of DeKalb, it may be difficult to find bidders in the future, but yes, I can, I can agree to disagree, or I can agree to work with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Favor. I appreciate that. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2021-025, authorizing the award of a contract to Current Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $1,251,956 for the resurfacing and concrete repairs on First Street and Taylor Street, including Alternates 1 and 2, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $1,283,673. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't like to do asides, but two things I thought I'd reflect on, and maybe you share my opinion. One is, I never figured out why on big projects like this, we get down to 41 cents and 50 cents and 86 cents, but that's getting it all on the table. So, the other piece is that I reflect back to a year ago where we were, and we were at the beginning of the COVID crisis, and we were, we had no crystal ball. We certainly didn't know where we'd be or when we'd be at a safer place, and we're getting closer and closer to that. I'm happy to say, at this point, it's likely that we have, it's not likely, but we do have the resources, whereas last year, we could have been millions off of our projections. So I thank you for the prudence last year, but we have some left in reserve, which we put toward this project concept price. And the bids went out, or the bidding was invited, and we received three pretty good bids from companies that are very experienced in this line of work, and also used to working this area. Current Contractor was the low bidder, and this is an ambitious project. It's First Street from Augusta, south to Taylor Street, and then west on Taylor to the park, roughly the park and over the bridge and so forth. And if you've driven these areas, it looks like the coat of many colors. Lots of patches, lots of bad road on the curb lines, and there's really not much to patch anymore, and the patches aren't going to hold. So I think residents who travel this, and quite a few do every day, will be very pleased if you like to go through. This was what we're recommending. Now, with a project of this size, we added a small contingency to whichever of the bidders you were to go with, and we recommend Current Contractor, because they're the low bid, and we fill the responsible bid. In addition, I pointed out in the background that there are some repairs to be had to the manholes on the sanitary system, which are spaced, and the estimated cost of that is about $83,000, almost $84,000. When you add the contingency, the base bid from Current, and that, you come over the 1.2 million that we have for the budget, but we get reimbursed for every penny of what we estimated for the sanitary district. And so we're not proposing that we go beyond the budget. We are proposing that we include a little bit of a contingency for those things. An example would be, we're going to cross a lot of side streets, and the feathering of the nice new surface on First to those side streets always has some challenges, and we'd hate to leave some sound and some not, so there may be a few more bugs. We like to give the city engineer an opportunity to do that work properly. So we recommend this to you, and we're excited about the opportunity to get this done, and with what we did on 7th Street and some other work in the last couple of years, we feel this is very good. This, I should mention, and I mentioned in my background, this includes two alternates also for some work on South 6th and South 7th Street.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Again, thanks for the background, and our city engineer, Zach Gill, thanks for all your work on this and providing this information to us. You know, those are two thoroughfares. People are going to notice it, just like they noticed 7th Street, like they noticed First Street a couple of years ago, that area down Taylor Street, from First Street all the way to the bridge, and then from Taylor on First Street, all the way up through Augusta Avenue. So, kudos to our staff for putting the numbers together and getting some bids that looked good, and so congratulations. We've had a motion on the floor, a second, and any further discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Our final resolution this evening is 2021-026, which authorizes an agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428, to provide emergency medical services for DeKalb High School home football games for the 2020-2021 school year. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
Two quick comments. Another sign that we're heading near the end of the crisis phase, that there will always be a need for vigilance and so forth, so that, and that sign is that the local school district is contemplating football games at DeKalb High School this fall. We have a contract that was appended that will reimburse us at the same rate as we would have charged last year, consideration of the fact that we're still not out of the woods, and, but it does cover our employees who would be down there providing that service. That's a pretty straightforward contract. Recommend your approval.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
McAdam?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Moving on to ordinances, there are no ordinances for second reading tonight. We have several for, I guess only one for first reading, and that is Ordinance 2021-013, amending Chapter 24 Building Code, Article 3 International Fire Code, Section 307.1.2, burning of leaves and garden debris, to prohibit the burning of leaves. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Prior to City Manager Nicholas, we do have a couple of folks who would like to speak to this item tonight. The first person is Tim Mesher from 604 West Lincoln Highway. Tim, if you feel comfortable, you can remove your mask, and your comments, please try to keep those to three minutes or less.
Sure. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. I would just like to reiterate what the, basically what the letter said that you read during the public participation part of the meeting. So I live on the west end of Lincoln Highway, near the police station. Those are acre lots, many trees, oaks, hickories, and black walnuts that are all over 100 years old. The wind blows 30 miles an hour, there's stuff falling from them. It's just guaranteed. Every spring, I pick up at least a couple contractors, wheelbarrow size, just of deadfall and stuff, because you don't want to mow that. I mean, you just don't. The stuff is not easily put into yard waste bags, or bundled up into four-foot lengths, so that the disposal company will take it. Some of it's over two inches in diameter, too, and they won't take that either. So, I did send Mike some pictures today. I had, we had a couple trees fall down, smaller, but dead, too sizable, and I would have to hire a landscape company to actually remove that stuff if I couldn't, you know, burn it now and then. Also, in the definitions of the proposed revision, it says nothing that can be burned that is a result of tree trimming and consisting of trees, et cetera. But yet recreational fire pits are okay. So does that mean, you know, you can go to the gas station and buy firewood, you can burn that, but you can't burn wood that came from your own yard? I'm just very confused by that. We've been burning there for 22 years, as long as we've owned the house, a few times a year. Never had any complaints. I always have a hose out there. You know, we're safe. Neighbors always burn. As far as I know, there's been no complaints with them either. I can't speak for my neighbors. Our fire pit is four feet in diameter. We never burn outside the fire pit. You know, we're not having huge blazing bonfires or anything. We don't, I don't burn leaves myself, or grass, or anything like that. It's just deadfall and trimmings from dead bushes, of which there's a lot. So I just have to say, my wife and I are not in favor of, you know, getting rid of, you know, occasional burning of yard debris. Thank you.
Thank you. So basically, you're comfortable with leaving the ordinance the way it is?
Yes, and, you know, leaves don't matter to me, because I don't burn leaves. I mow, and I leave them there.
Thank you, Mr. Mesher. Barbara Larson.
I'm a leaf burner. We back up to the forest preserve. We have lots of trees. So I personally rake the leaf, I don't know, four or five times because it keeps blowing. And then, even though I put them on my parkway, other people put them on the street, now they're blocking the water running off the street and getting those all clogged. And the wind, you know, the wind out here, I mean, it's just a problem. So if we can't burn them in the back in my fire pit, and I have to move all my leaves to the front, I would at least like the council to come up with some kind of a program like your garbage day. They're going to come tomorrow. Okay, I'll get out today. I'll get my leaves out there. I only have to control them for 24 hours. Sometimes it's two or three weeks, just depending on how it's going. And that's, it's just a mess. I mean, all in your shrubs and your bushes and stuff, so I'm in favor of keeping it how it is. But if the majority chooses not to, at least try to come up with a better plan of how they're picked up by the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. We have one other letter that we received. Did council get it from Steve and TJ Irving? Mr. Irving was indicating that he would be here tonight to speak to this, and basically, I think his letter, and I'd be happy to read it if you'd like me to, what's the pleasure? I think he basically was saying he would like us to do nothing and just keep the ordinance the way it is. Hearing nothing, I will just simply say that from Steve and TJ Irving, he indicates that he would like us to reject eliminating the current code by amending the code, simply, again, keeping it pretty much like we have it now. So those are the public comments regarding this issue.
Mayor, I think you allowed Claire Crohn to reserve her comments for this moment.
Sure. Claire, if you'd like to speak to that, and if you, I'm going to ask you this time to kindly consider removing your mask so that we can, just, you're not going to do it, are you? I just knew you weren't going to do it.
I'm a biologist. I'm sorry.
That's why, that's why I didn't interrupt you, first of all, Claire. I knew that you probably would not do that. So try to speak as loud as you can so that we can try to understand you.
Now, my concerns, of course, are based on what the commission meant in the first place. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here the first time this came up. Our reasons are for the health of the community. I do want to quote some professional opinions on the pollution that does come off of burning garden waste, not only leaves, but it seems to me the biggest contention here, besides the one woman who does have a lot of leaves, but would concede if we at least had some better regulations as to when they were going to be vacuumed up, is that people want to burn their wood. Now, I do want to add something about wood here. First, particle pollution in the first place, pollution meaning from fine particulate matter, and that generally has a PM 2.5 rating on it, is directly linked to mortality with 107,000 fatalities a year. This is per the U.S. EPA. The vulnerable are specifically at risk. We're talking about health in this situation here. We have higher asthma cases every year. We have many polluting sources, specifically, of course, our airplanes, our bigger systems, our factories, but our automobiles, they're emitting this fine particulate matter all the time. We're talking about trying to eliminate something that adds to that. Now, one thing that you may not realize in general is what else gets emitted when you burn wood, not these fine particulate matters that then get ingested and breathed in, but chemicals such as benzene, which is a major public health concern from the WHO, because they have so many cancer-causing, and blood disease-causing problems associated with it, formaldehyde, acrolyne, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, the PAHs. It's not simply smoke. It's a pollutant that is damaging to people. Our job as a commission is to protect the environment for the good of the city. The environment includes the people. Now, who's mostly at risk? Children, those with heart problems, lung conditions, COPD. This kind of smoke can cause inflammation, affect your immune system, make you more prone to lung infections, as well as damage to the unborn. So pregnant women can't be around it. Now, we have a new problem, COVID-19, and according to our CDC, people who currently have or who are recovering from COVID-19 may be at an increased risk of health effects from exposure to wood smoke due to compromised heart and/or lung function. Specifically related to that disease, the advice for people impacted like this, stay inside. Do we need any more reason to have to stay inside? We have been homebound too long. Indeed, we can't get rid of all pollution. We're going to have our cars. We're talking about adding over and beyond what we already have. So the risk goes up for our vulnerable, and those are the people that we need to protect. There's a biological term called toxic load. We want to keep down the toxic load. There is no safe amount of particulate matter for the vulnerable.
You're over your three minutes, Claire, so try to wrap it up.
Okay. I do remind you that this is part of our Chapter 12 on nuisances. We have a general mandate to cause, permit, or maintain any act or condition which is injurious or dangerous to the public, we need to remove it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Appreciate it. Okay, so that is public participation as it relates to this particular item. I'm going to let the City Manager Nicholas explain why this amendment consideration was brought to us, and then we'll open it up for any discussion council may have.
Well, just very simply, Mayor, the council directed me to come back with a revised document, and that's what you have before you tonight. I went to some trouble to play it out for you, to show what it would look like, and you have it in your background as well. So that's what's before you in your background, which is what the council had directed, which is simply to remove the phrase "burning of leaves" from the ordinance as being, as being no longer allowable, but to leave the garden debris within the shell of the ordinance. So that's what's there.
Okay. Discussion. Alderman Verbic.
I really appreciate the work of the commission. You've got certainly an energetic agenda ahead for this year, so all the best to that effort. Circling back, though, to this proposal, I'm just finishing my first four years of service as an alderman, and this is the first I've heard of any issues of burning. So I've not had any issues brought to me, so I'm thinking that the existing ordinance works. If that didn't work, then I would probably would have heard things during my first four years of service. So based on my experience, I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
So I think originally I understood the commission's intent behind this to reduce pollutants in the air. It is a really difficult spot to be in, as it sounds like the majority of residents that we've heard from are in favor of leaving the ordinance as it is. So, you know, there needs to be the public will as well to move forward with this. I would love to have less pollution, but I think that the public is pushing in the other direction.
Thank you. Alderman Favor.
I would, I would agree with Alderman Morris. I've only received, the only feedback I've received is, you know, to vote against making any changes at all. I haven't received any feedback in support of making the changes.
Thank you. Alderman McAdams.
That is my experience as well. I have not heard one person come out in favor of making the changes. All have expressed an interest in keeping things the same.
Any other discussion? Alderman Smith.
I, the calls I've received are just "leave things alone." It's very obvious, you know, from the letters we received. Also, as far as the vacuuming, I'm going to defend our public works. They get out there when they can. We have liberated equipment to handle that, and, you know, they do the best job they have. If we want more, we can pay for more, but it's going to cost us all. I just want to defend them on what they do. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Morris.
I guess I also want to thank the Environmental Commission for bringing this to our attention because I think that planting the seed of this idea is an important first step in getting the public will behind the idea. So I think it's really important to bring things up like this, and I really appreciate the attempt to do so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Perkins.
Likewise, I commend the commission on their passion. You know, your agenda is aggressive, and I love the passion that you approach things with. But again, generally, I agree with everyone else. The masses seem to be supporting sustaining things as they exist, and likewise, I really haven't heard any real complaints about things, about things as they currently exist. So I'll be voting no as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? So as we call the roll, a yes vote would be in favor of the amendment. The, a no vote would simply be to leave the ordinance the way it presently is. Is that clear? Roll call.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Morris.
No.
Smith.
No.
Perkins.
No.
McAdam.
No.
Six Naye.
Thank you very much. That ordinance, consideration of that amendment is defeated. Okay, now we move along to reports and communications. This allows any of our consulmen, our aldermen, the mayor, and the city clerk, and the city manager to make a report. We have no executive session tonight, so this will be our final acts of business, if you will, and I will start with our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris.
I did have some residents reach out to me with concerns about the face masks being lowered during city council meetings for people to speak, just due to the fact that not everyone has had the opportunity to have their COVID vaccines yet, and there are concerns surrounding that. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Alderman Smith, third ward.
No report, Mayor.
And Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
Now, fifth ward, Scott McAdams.
No report.
And Mike Verbic, sixth ward.
No report.
And finally, Alderman Tony Favor, seventh ward.
One of the, one of the things I have gotten a few emails about recently is the amount of trash or the amount of litter that's now visible. And I don't know if it's necessarily that it's all of a sudden. I think it's, you know, all the snow has finally melted, all the accumulation, it's now visible. I know that certainly on windy trash days, you know, in my neighborhood, it seems like there's a lot more garbage and trash that ends up in the backyards and things like that. I will say it was, it was kind of neat, the subdivision I live in, we have a Facebook page, and someone was caught doing a random act of kindness. They had a trash bag, and they were out just in the, in the green space, picking up trash. And I would just encourage everyone, if you do go for a walk, you know, take one of those plastic bags that we're not supposed to be using anymore, and go fill it up with trash and garbage, and, you know, just do your part as you walk along the path. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if we all work together, we're going to continue to live in a community that we all want to, we live in and be proud of. So my report's very short, and that is that this is the last city council meeting prior to the election on April 6th. However, due to the fact that the county board of elections needs to certify the election results on April 6th, this council and the mayor will, will not change until the office on May 10th, when we'll have a peaceful transition of power. So what you see here is what you're going to get, at least until May 10th. Okay? City Clerk Fizikas, any report?
Yes, a couple of things. One, I would like to speculate that Alderman Favor might have seen one of the Trash Squirrels. They're a local community group that is doing a lot of spring cleaning right now. They've got different projects that they're doing at, you know, intersections and parks and other places that have picked up a lot of litter, much of that, I'm sure, over the, over the winter. And they do have a Facebook group. So they're Trash Squirrels. I think they're working on getting just about 200, getting close to 200 members, and they're out there with their bags, and generally also with their masks, and picking up that trash. So just wanted to give a shout out to the squirrels. Also, I have an update on voting, just wanting to remind that several more DeKalb County sites for early and grace period voting have opened. They opened today. So in addition to the DeKalb County Government Campus, you can now early vote at the DeKalb Township Building, Kirkland Village Hall, and the Sandwich Fire Station now through the 31st. Okay, so you're thinking, what about campus? There will be early and grace period voting on campus. That site will be open next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week, in the gallery lounge of the Holmes Student Center. All early and grace period sites are open to all DeKalb County residents. So you can choose the site most convenient for you to do your grace period registration and your early voting. Keep in mind that the hours for the early voting sites can be different each day, so be sure to check the schedule at the DeKalb County Clerk's Office, which you can access online at dekalbcounty.org. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Fizikas. Appreciate it. And City Manager Nicholas, any report?
No report.
For those of you who may be watching at home at the current time, and even for those in the room tonight, we are not in a time warp going backwards. This is not March 8, 2021, as the sign says there. This is actually March 22, isn't it? Or have I lost it completely? No, I haven't? Okay, good, very good. Look at that, look at that. See how simp, see how quickly our IT staff hops right on it? Well, that's great. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Alderman Favor.
Yes.
Thank you. Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.